So just to give some background to our presentation today, school districts about every five or six years conduct a study to look at the demography or the movement of students in and out of communities. And tonight Hazel Reinhardt is going to provide us with what are resident enrollment projections. So that would be the enrollment of Edina residents coming into our schools. Hazel looks at birth rates, looks at housing, uses terms like cohort survival method, migration, just to give us a sense of what's happening to our resident enrollment, what's happening with our pupils that are coming into Edina schools. And this helps us with what's called obviously enrollment. But enrollment impacts our funding, it also impacts our facilities, and it impacts boundaries and all those things that go into schooling. So tonight Hazel has -- is here. Hazel Reinhardt has done demography studies. I've been superintendent for 15 years and worked at Hazel. She's done demography studies for cities, for school districts. And her associate, DeCarlestrom, is here, provides perspective on housing. So tonight Hazel's going to wrap all of this stuff around resident enrollment to provide us with some projections and some direction for us as a school system. So turn it over to -- I'd like to introduce Hazel Reinhardt. Hazel?
Thank you, John.
Just to give you some perspective, I have been doing demographic work for many, many years. I was the first Minnesota state demographer, and I made the first school enrollment projections in 1976 for the state of Minnesota for districts. And then I didn't work on school enrollments for a long period of time. Then when I started my own consulting business in 1991, my first school enrollment client was the Minnetonka School District. And that was really largely because the assistant superintendent had been -- had worked with me at the state of Minnesota. So I started this sort of slowly, and now it has become, I wouldn't say quite a full-time job, but a fair amount of activity in Minnesota, in Wisconsin, in northern Illinois, and more recently in Colorado. So I have some perspective of different states and the way in which state policies and laws affect enrollment and enrollment projections. So as John said, we're going to focus here on Edina residents attending the Edina public schools.
And Hazel, just to give some additional background, this is for Independent School District 273. That's the name of Edina. And I'm not correcting you, but it is Independent School District 273.
Yes, indeed. I like to remind people that trends take place over a longer period of time. And I'm looking at 10 years here, looking back 10 years, and then I'll look forward 10 years. So we're starting at the point of 2008, '09. Just to remind everybody that this was a time of the Great Recession, and which started in 2007, was declared over in 2010, but we know the economic recovery from it took many years beyond 2010. And we haven't really seen the significant increase in jobs and earnings until the last couple of years. One of the really important outcomes of that Great Recession was that it really lowered fertility and births nationwide and here in Minnesota. And of course, that makes a difference in future school enrollments. So if we look at the past 10 years, in the Edina public schools, total enrollment excluding early childhood increased by 525 students or 6.7 percent. And in resident enrollment, increased by 385 students or 5.7 percent. Non-residents made up 15.4 percent of total enrollment in 2018-19. It was 14.6 percent in 2008-9. In essence, pretty much the same percentage. The market share of the Edina public schools in 2018-19 is 81.6 percent, which is a very high percentage. However, that would be somewhat lower if district residents attending 287 were included in the district's enrolled school population. They were not included in here. And as you know, the Edina Public -- the Edina Independent School District is a member of 287, and so it uses 287 for specialized services.
Can you just explain, is that 81 percent of eligible kids?
Of the enrolled students living in the boundaries of 273.
Ah, okay.
So some of them are going to be going to private schools, some of them are going to be open and rolling out, some of them are going to be going to charter schools. So of the enrolled population, can't count somebody who's dropped out, can't count, it's 81.6 percent.
You mean of all students who go to some school?
Yes.
We get 81.6 percent of them?
Yes.
But you said the number would be lower if we included 287?
Seven, yes. Because I don't have a count of your students going to 287. Probably reduce it maybe two, three percentage points.
Okay, thank you.
But that's a very high percentage for Twin City Metro school districts. Very high. Okay. The highest percentages occur in District 196, Rosemount, Apple Valley, Eagan, South Washington. New districts, not much in the way of competition there. You had a net -- Edina public schools had a net gain of almost 1,000 students from other public options. A pretty good indication of the desirability of the Edina public schools. However, more students are opting for other public options than in the past. And that's been occurring everywhere.
Is that stronger in -- were there any different numbers over the 10-year period?
The numbers are increasing, and the numbers have increased more rapidly for charter schools. Open enrollment out of the Edina school district is very minimal.
Okay.
Very minimal. As we look forward 10 years, and I have to remind myself, that's 2028-29, I'm projecting that Edina's resident enrollment, this is Edina's public schools resident enrollment, projecting to range from about 7,400 to about 7,500, an increase of four to five and a half percent. And then I show you the resident enrollment of 711 of 2018-19. Resident K5 enrollment in the Edina public schools projected to increase, as is the middle school enrollment. Resident high school enrollment is projected to decrease in the first five projection years. Okay? And then it should turn up to reach about today's level again. And that's all about the size of those cohorts. Resident kindergarten is projected to be smaller than the previous year's grade 12, which depresses enrollment growth. And this is continuation of an existing trend. And net migration projected to be about the same as it is in the recent past.
Are kindergarten classes always lower than our senior class?
No. In many districts, it's larger. It's about the size of cohorts coming in. Because this district has sort of an equilibrium, these cohorts are moving through of some larger birth years, and that's been a trend for the past 10 years. But my point is, it depresses growth. And then, yeah, net migration, the same. In five years here, I'm only project the elementary schools for five years. Concord projected to have a substantial increase in resident students, 129 in five years, largely the result of the high net in-migration or survival rates at that school. Countryside projected to have a decrease in resident students because of an exceptionally large grade five, which ages out of the elementary grades. The other elementary schools show small gains or flat resident enrollment. And then the housing unit projects more resident K5 students than the cohort method. I'll talk about that. That's not unusual, but here I think we want to pay a little more attention to what that's telling us, what it's signaling. On the housing data, and we'll come in and look at this in great detail, is that the changes in single-family detached housing stock, newly-built units from teardowns, and the sales of existing units have a significant positive effect on resident enrollment in the Edina public schools. And Edina's single-family detached unit student yields look more like a developing suburb than a first-ring suburb. Okay? The per-student yield for newly-built, single-family detached units, which are of course the teardowns, because we really don't have any available lots, is very high, 0.75. And that is comparable to what we see in the developing areas of the Wayzetta School District, in the areas developing in Plymouth and Maple Grove. The per-student yield is higher in single-family detached units that sold versus those that were not for sale and did not sell. 0.62 versus 0.52. Those are some of the highest yields that I have seen. And the differential between them, larger than we see in most areas.
Can you tell me what that insight means, that bottom bullet?
What it means, that if a unit sells, single-family detached, you get 0.62 kids for the Edina public schools.
What, that was not for sale?
What, not for sale, didn't turn over, it's 0.52. In other words, the sale of single-family detached units has a positive impact on enrollment in the Edina public schools. Okay?
And detached means not abutants, or?
It means a standalone unit.
Yep.
Single family. Single family. Shares no walls with anyone else. Okay?
So it won't even include semi-detached, double, twin homes?
No, that's a different. And then 88 percent of your resident students live in single-family detached units. Okay? Again, a very, very high percentage. Now, what could make these projections too high or too low? Well, too high, the projected kindergarten is too high. The net out migration in the high school grades is higher than projected. We'll take a look at that. A recession which would slow growth. Too low, the projected kindergarten too low, and the rate of teardowns would, if that decreases, because that's really a big, important factor in increasing enrollment. When we look at education choices here, I'm looking at the Edina public schools compared to Minnesota. For 2017-18, you can see that you have a much higher percentage of your enrolled students in non-public settings, primarily in the traditional brick-and-mortar schools. Homeschooling does not appeal to the Edina school district residents. You can look at open enrollment, 8.5 percent of all enrolled students in the state of Minnesota open enroll to another public district. You get 14.6 percent in and only 1.4 percent out.
Public options.
To public options. Open enrollment is a public option, paid for and by the state. And charter schools, 6 percent of all Minnesota enrolled students are in charter schools, 1.4 percent of the Edina district residents. And then you can see the comparison of the capture rate or market share. Here's just a way of looking at the numbers, the resident numbers, and then the non-resident numbers. And looking here at the non-resident numbers, an increase from 1153 to 1293. And at the residence, 6726 to 711. So you overall have growth during the past 10 years. This is a kind of way that demographers like to look at things. We look at change, which is the column, the second one from the left, the percentage change, natural increase, decrease. A negative number means that kindergarten was smaller than the previous year's grade 12. And you can see every year for the past 10 years, it was negative. And then net migration, it can mean that someone moved across the school district boundary. It can also mean a change in moving from a non-public to a public, public options, whatever. And the combination of the two results in the total change. So you see, you lost 373 students depressed because of the natural decrease, and you gained 758 because of net migration. And so you had an overall change of 385. And here we just simply look at resident enrollment and want to point out, I look at really what happens in that top row of kindergarten. And you can see that, number one, it fluctuates. That's pretty typical, with 2013-14 being an exceptionally large year. But you can basically see in the last, well, in 2017-18 being large, slightly higher at the end than at the beginning. Not a lot, but just slightly. Then I like to look at the column, the most recent. And here we see, if we look at these numbers, that we're running slightly fewer kids in the elementary than we are when we come into high school. But we get some, a little bit of movement in there. And then if you look on the diagonal, that's how we calculate net migration. So that cohort that started out in 2008-9, in kindergarten at 492, 10 years later in grade 10 was 586. So that's how that works. This is simple math here. Average resident grade size, 536 at K5, 542 at 68, and 567 at 912. Now, there's no pronounced continuous net in-migration at the beginning of middle school or at the beginning of high school, which is fairly common for most districts. In other words, if people make the decision in the Edina school district to attend a non-public school, they stick with it. That is, they stay in elementary to middle school to high school. They don't flow back into the public schools. And based on this current resident grade sizes, natural decrease is likely to continue. We can see that apparent in these numbers as well.
So what are the increases coming from? If it's, is that, that's all from new move-ins? Because K5, then middle school's bigger, so that's only people moving in?
Moving in. And also somewhat due to births. We want to take a look here at what's happening with births. Okay? This table shows resident live births. Resident live births is a very particular meeting. That means that on the birth certificate, it's all based on the mother and the mother's address. And she gives her address and city, county, whatever. This is all double-checked by the state through programs that it gets all correctly assigned. It takes them a year or more to do this processing. So it does not, this looks at where the mother is a resident, not where the child is born. Okay? And so what we see here is that births in 2001, we have 16 years of birth here, births started to increase. They peaked in 2007 in Minnesota and in the U.S. It was the highest number of births since 1964. Then came the Great Recession, and you can see what has happened. And in 2017, Minnesota has not yet released the numbers, but the U.S. has released the national numbers and is the lowest number of births in 30 years. The basic conclusion by demographers is that the births foregone in the Great Recession are indeed foregone. They are not simply delayed. And that a higher proportion of women will reach the end of childbearing without having And people who thought or had desired two children, many of them settled for one. People who maybe wanted three, settled for two, for economic reasons. So we now have fertility in Minnesota, completed fertility below 1.8. Replacement is 211. Okay? So we're just, we're not anticipating a large number of children. Then I look at Hennepin County and suburban Hennepin County. Suburban Hennepin County is simply Hennepin County minus the city of Minneapolis. And you can see here that births in suburban Hennepin County are going up. Okay? And births in Minneapolis obviously are not. And then we look at the city of Edina here, and you can see that births are up slightly at the end. We also have it for the school district. My experience is that those data are not very useful in projecting school enrollment. Then I take those suburban Hennepin County births, and, well, let me preface this by saying, there is no ideal proxy for Edina resident births. The births by district are under-reported because out-of-wedlock births vary by year, and out-of-wedlock births, parents can decide not to have that reported by address. So we have two things that lower and produce variability. The suburban Hennepin County is not ideal, although you can see your percentage is pretty stable against it. It's a large number. It provides a larger population that is probably fairly typical. You know, it removes the university population basically out of it. I would like it better if the percentages were, you know, 25 percent, something. Well, because the way the numbers work, it would tell me a little more. But when I look at your resident kindergarten against that pool, which has been adjusted to represent getting to the age of five by September 1st, you can see that your resident kindergarten has been fairly stable against that pool. So I'm going to use that pool to project. Then I'm looking at ratios. We want to look at some averages here to smooth out the trend lines. Past six years, you can see it was 4.94; past five, 4.93; past four, 4.96; past three, 5.0; past two, 5.02. So it's been increasing a little bit. The lowest ratio was 4.60 in 2011-12. So no proxy is really ideal here. Resident kindergarten assumptions, I chose a low, the average of the past four years, at 4.96, and a high of 5.02, the average of the past two years. I'm going to use this Hennepin County as a proxy for the first four, five projection years. And then the longer term, in the past 16 years, suburban Hennepin County resident births increased from 14.60 to 14.91 of Minnesota resident births. The average of the past five years was 15.6, and I'm going to use that, projecting that forward for the last five projection years. Now, here's the story, an interesting one, provided by the Minnesota Demography Center. Projected Minnesota zero year rolls. Pretty flat. Pretty flat. And in fact, if you go out to 2050, it doesn't have much uptick. So what that sort of suggests to us is that we're not going to get much lift from births. And then I projected here, the projected suburban Hennepin County kindergarten pool. And in the bold, there are those children have already been born, we have them counted. And then I projected, based on that assumption, out to 28-29. So you can see it's higher, well, it's a little higher. It gets a little uptick, but nothing very dramatic. And then I take that pool and I apply these percentages, and I get a kindergarten number. And so I'm projecting from 522, you were at 506 in 2018-19, these again residents, to 524, and the other one to 530. I add them up because I want to compare it to the past 10 years. And as you can see, I'm projecting more resident kindergarten students than you had in the past 10 years. So I'm actually projecting a little more growth in there than you've seen. And I think that's justified by what we see. So now let's look at that migration. Remember, I talked about the diagonals going down? Well, this past year is a kind of an unusual year. And so I've challenged the school district to help me understand what's going on. Couple of places that's unusual. First of all, for the first time in 10 years, you've had negative net migration of 100 students. And there are several reasons for it. First of all, in the K-to-one transition, you've always had basically an increase, except from 14, fall of 14 to fall of 15. But this last year, it was zero. And again, you see in the transition from 1 to 2, you were running pretty substantial numbers, again, zero. But the ones that I have in red are the ones that really interest me. One is that transition from grade 6 to 7, but then more especially, the transition from grade 8 to 9. And you can see this past year was really an outlier from the previous. I think my hypothesis is that you've had more students at that transition point, perhaps going to 287. I think that's the most logical. We have a little increase, well, we'll look at the other numbers, but we can't see it. We see a little increase in charter, but it's most likely to 287. And then here I've aggregated them, and again, you see, just a way of sort of highlighting where the issue, challenges are. What I like to say, we want to look at the flash, shine the flashlight.
Hazel, what makes you think that it's migration to 287?
Well, because 287 offers ALC, and it offers online. Okay? And that may be attractive. And I've seen that in other districts. So I think that might be. It also does not show up in open enrollment, and it does not really show up in charter schools. Maybe a little bit. So that's the most likely. It's unlikely that suddenly, a bunch of people who had kids in eighth grade and were going to go into high school moved out of the district. Although crazy things do happen, you know, but...
So they wouldn't have gone to non-public options?
Well, no, because those numbers don't show going up either.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you keep on, you know, looking at all those numbers, they're not going up, Then, of course, we looked at migration as a number. Here we can look at it as a survival rate, the percent of people who survived. 1.00 means that the entire cohort moved to the next highest grade. Now, we're not saying each individual, we're saying if there were 100, 100 moved. In the case of K-to-1, in the low assumption, you had 3.6 percent increase, on the high, 3.2. I'm using these migration rates here. So you can see where you're getting increases, and then you can see, once it's below 100, where you're having some attrition. And then in the projections, the cohort survival, we're marrying these assumptions, the kindergarten assumption with the migration assumptions. And in the projections, the kindergarten assumptions account for more of the difference in the projections than the migration. And the kindergarten assumptions account for 70 to 71 students in 10 years, the migration only 35 to 36. And then we look at the projections here. And they're in order of size in 10 years. If we look at those projections and then divide them by elementary, middle school, and high school, here is where you see, you can clearly see the growth in the K5 and the 6 to 8, and you can see the decline at the 9-12. And then out in, by the time we get to 2028-29, we're very close to where we are today. Then I take this apart to see what the, what it looks like, you know, it's here. And the natural decrease averages 7 to 24 per year, depending on the kindergarten assumption in the projection, that in-migration average is 8 to 28 per year, depending on the migration. In the past 10 years, natural decrease averaged 37, so it's actually less severe than it has been. And in the past five years, net in-migration average 39 per year, but in the past... And in the past five years, in migration, average 39 per year, but in the past three years, it was 37. So again, that's why I say it's coming in very similar to the recent past. So that's what the cohort tells us. Now let's shift to the housing. There is a relationship between school enrollment and housing, but it is a very complex relationship. And it is not the relationship that many people assume it to be. We are very fortunate here in the Edina School District to have an actual count of the number of apartment units, which is absent in many districts, in fact, most districts. These unit counts are from the tax rolls, and in the case of apartments, from the city. So we see the units. The units are as of June 20, 2018. And we see again the Edina public school residents, students, and then the yield. And some people are put off by that term, "yield," but it's a way of calculating it, saying if you, a single-family detached unit will yield 0.5 for about a half a student for the Edina public schools. Single-family attached, meaning townhomes, 0.12. People get very excited about townhomes and apartments. And let me tell you, every district we've ever worked in, it is single-family detached that yields school-age children. Now, we might see something different in New York City, or possibly in certain areas of Chicago or San Francisco, but nowhere else. In apartments, 0.23, which is high, and I will unpack that for you here. A duplex unit, 0.28, that's pretty typical of duplex. A split duplex means they're owned by different people. And then condominiums, just no kids at all. So we're just looking at apartments. This is the Edina School District here, 2014 to 2018. And we see an increase in the yield. In most districts, apartments yield about 0.11, sometimes as high as 0.15. So, okay, what's happening here? Resident students residing in apartments are concentrated in a few units. Of the 2,635 apartment units in the Edina School District, only 409, or 15.5 percent, contain an Edina public school student. The yield from those 409 is 1.46 students per unit. Okay? And I can tell you, they are in the oldest units in the district. Okay? Down in the southwest corner of the district.
Southeast.
Southwest.
Yeah, southwest or southeast.
Well, southwest, west of France.
West of France.
West of France.
East of 100.
Yeah.
Parkland neighborhood.
Yeah, parkland neighborhood, yep. Now, here we look, this is now, here we're looking at the city of Edina, not the Edina School District, the city of Edina. The number of students, public school students, this would be in Hopkins, Richfield, and Edina. We have an increase in students living in apartments, going from 8 percent to 10 percent of students. However, when we look at selected apartment buildings, these are all basically newer buildings, and I have them by school district, you can see that there is virtually no yield from these new buildings. Now, what this looks like 50 years from now, who knows? But nothing immediate. And this is no surprise. This is what we see over and over and over again. So let's look at where kids are. Let's look at those single-family detached units. There is a relationship in yield, and it is absolutely a perfect relationship in the Edina School District. There's a relationship between year built and yield. The newer the unit, the higher the yield. Okay? And last time, you said, "Well, 1980 or later, that's not so new." Well, we don't want, you know, in this case, 100 units or 200 units out in the recent one. So you can see that indeed, more students from newer units.
Can I ask a quick question? So I guess the question I have is not so much the impact the building of the high-rise or whatever, mid-rise have on, bless you, have on the enrollment in the school district. But the question I more have is the impact of the displacement of Edina residents moving to the high-rises or mid-rise buildings. Because if, a lot of these buildings are being built, and some of the logic is that we want Edina residents to stay within Edina, and we have an aging population, and so the logic is, hopefully, these residents will move there. Well, then in turn, if you use the numbers that you have there, you have a higher yield of children on houses that are being built, like being torn down and being built.
Well, and houses being sold. But I can't tell you exactly whether the person left that moved to a high-rise.
Oh, no.
All I know is if that single-family unit sells, you're going to get more kids.
Correct, correct. So I'm just trying to figure out if...
So it appears on the surface that it works, but we can't say for sure.
Where are you going, Erica?
So my question is, if by building these types of units, which I'm not arguing are good or bad, I think it's wonderful, if by building these units, if we are displacing more Edina residents, which is fine, if that then has...
What do you mean displacing them?
So she's suggesting that if you build this apartment building, it's not going to be people moving into Edina to move into it. It's current Edina residents leaving their single-family homes to move into these apartments or condominiums. And then therefore, now we have an increase in those houses turning over, more likely with children moving in.
We know that we have an increase of units turning over, and there are more kids. Whether the person who left it moved to that building, I cannot tell you. Okay?
Can you infer anything from the fact that the new apartments that have been built that you showed on the prior slide have little, few, no children in them? Can you make any inference, reach any inference there, Stu?
Well, we, what we know is that middle-income people living in places such as Minnesota, Illinois, Wisconsin, Colorado, if they have children, their preference is single-family detached housing. I can tell you the rule of thumb, that any unit that has an exterior entrance is more likely to have children than a unit that has an interior entrance, which means that most condo units, apartments, are likely to have fewer kids than a duplex or a townhome. Market value, the more expensive the unit, the higher the yield. Now, that is counterintuitive to most people. But here, pretty clearly demonstrated. Now, here, we saw these data earlier. The new unit, and this means it's the result of a tear-down, built between January 1st, 2016, and June 30, 2018, yield of 0.75, three-quarters of a Edina public school student. Existing, these are all single-family, existing, that means built pre-2016, not sold, meaning was not on the market, hence no owner, new owner, 0.52. On the market, sold, 0.62. So I'd say tongue-in-cheek, you ought to encourage me to sell. Then I look at the age.
So is our takeaway that tear-downs versus selling the Rambler to somebody who's going to live in the Rambler is producing more kids, if it's a tear-down of that neighborhood?
It is, it is. However, I look around my own neighborhood, and there are many, many units that have been expanded. They were not torn down. They have a second story put on them. They have a huge expansion on them. And that, we cannot separate out from the tax data. Okay? All we could see from that is value. You know, if a $450,000 home was not a tear-down, but had 150,000 of expansion put on it, you can see that the yield is higher as well. That, see, the more expensive the unit, as it keeps on going up. This, to me, is, you know, this is a very, very fascinating set of numbers.
Is it different than you see in other cities?
Oh, enormously different, enormously different. It's, I would describe this as though Edina is going through a regeneration, that it is shedding that first ring characteristic and becoming like a developing suburb again.
Yet, when I think of developing suburbs, I think of when I was a kid growing up in Lakeville, and they have to build more schools. Even though you said that, you don't see us going to that kind of redevelopment where...
Because the tear-down is a replacement. It's not an added unit.
Yep.
Because the number of lots is fixed.
So the fear...
Unless we decide to allow a splitting of lots.
So the fear of the tear-down, and that means we must be dislodging seniors for young families, based on the numbers that you've shown us today, is not that we're going to have this huge sudden increase in children in the schools?
No.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'd tell you, you'd have a slow decrease.
Okay, thank you.
This is what's keeping enrollment steady with small growth, modest growth. Then I like to look at the age of people in single-family units to get a sense of what kind of turnover can we expect in the next five and 10 years. And here, in your single-family units, we get this from the tax data, which, not tax, voter data, which gives the age. Okay? Half of your units have at least one person over 55. 28 percent have at least one person over 65. 12 percent have at least one person 75 and over, and 4 percent have at least one person 85 and over. This says to me that we are going to continue to have a turn of units, because we have some fairly elderly people living in these single-family units. And that means, we assume this pattern of a higher student yield if the unit turns, and that will contribute a bit to the growth. 31 percent of the single-family detached units contain an Edina public school student. That's actually a pretty high percentage for an inner-ring suburb. We've seen that down as low as, oh, 14 percent?
In other cities?
Yep. And I've never seen it higher than about 34, 35 percent in the developing areas.
What was the lowest?
About 14.
What sort of city would have 14 percent?
Oh, I can give you any number of inner-ring suburbs and districts. Here's what you're expecting. And it's really in that tear-down, new-build, because we know those apartment units aren't going to yield very much. Then we're looking at another sort of interesting thing here, resident minority students, increase of 274 in four years, 22 percent. 121 reside in single-family detached units, that's 44 percent of the increase. 128 reside in apartments, a 47 percent of the increase. So that, basically, the growth of resident minority students is about equally divided in single-family detached versus apartments. And here are the data.
Do you find those numbers to be consistent? I know you just gave us a snapshot of two different school years.
What I was looking here, some districts, minority students are so heavily concentrated in apartments. And that's not the case here. That's my point. That's my point. But you see, it's really in the single-family detached and the apartments. You know, you pick up a little split duplex, but small numbers there. And then here are the projections by the individual schools. And I make individual projections by school, compare that to the district-wide projections, so they're all independent projections, and then summing them and seeing what the difference is. So very good fit, doesn't mean it's right necessarily, but it's a very good fit. You see the growth at Concord, the decrease at Countryside. And you can see it comes, that 5th grade class is coming out by 2019, 20, and you see the drop immediately. This is based on the housing unit method, and you look at the, this is now K5, resident students. The yield of not sold versus the yield of the sold, in many cases, more than doubling. And then the yield of the new units.
And you'd expect that, right? I mean, a not-sold unit, if you've been there, then you're not generating...
I want to tell you, though, in a lot of districts, the difference is very small, and sometimes even less if it sells. Even less.
When you looked at, we had that prior slide, when you showed the data for Countryside, I think it was, was it a decrease?
Yeah. Because you have a very large grade 5 that's going to move out in the next year.
Can you correlate that to the neighborhood in which that Countryside serves, and the age of the residents in that neighborhood relative to, you know, how many are over 55-plus, 65-plus, 75-plus, to predict any kind of housing turnover?
Well, one of the challenges with that is that Edina is moderate in its allowing students to move between attendance areas. Some schools are very, districts are very strict. You know, that 95 percent of the students living in attendance area attend the school in the attendance area. Edina is sort of in the middle. Some districts, it's a free-for-all. You can go wherever. So it's no correlation whatsoever. But you have that, just an exceptionally large number of 5th graders in 2018-19 at Countryside, and they're going to be in 6th grade and out of the elementary school system in 2000. And there's no pickup in that. Then the housing unit method is showing a projection here, as you can see from, this would be the effect of either the projected tear-downs and the turnover in units, showing growth. And then I compare the two, and the housing unit method projects 199 more K5 students than the cohort survival. Now, that's not unusual, and normally I would say I, and I do have more confidence in the cohort survival method. But in this case, I think we need to pay attention because it may mean that the births were a little under-projected. And if the rate of sales and teardowns continue at the current pace, K5 could exceed the cohort survival projections, just saying, could be. And then the middle school projections, again, independently made and some against, again, a good fit. Valley View, a little larger increase, well, I guess about the same. So, okay. So what do we, what can we say in summary here? What we're seeing is continued resident growth, sort of at the pace that we've, we've been moving in the last 10 years, that the turnover in housing and what's occurring in housing stock here is, is, I would call it a revitalization of, of Edina. That otherwise, well, we couldn't quite look like West St. Paul because we don't have that many 1952 units, let's say. But it really is changing. It is making Edina of like a newly-developed place again. What we have learned from doing this, how long have we been doing this, Dick?
About 15 years.
About 15 years on the housing, that these yields do not change quickly. That, that they tend to, to have some stability to them. So that's why I feel confident that we can project from them. And it makes, makes, makes Edina somewhat unique because we haven't seen this occur anywhere else.
Is there any way to reach any conclusions or engage in any supposition, if you will, about what triggers revitalization? I think we have our own ideas, anecdotally. We think we're, you know, Edina's in a great location, but so is Richfield, so we're assimilated or some, first things ever, that we got this fabulous school district where people want to be sending their kids to school. We, we guess that people are coming in here because of the quality of the school district, plus the location. So what are, are you able to provide any insight into that revitalization cause?
Well, I think you've, you've named both of them. It's the quality of the school district, the public schools, and it's, it's the location. I would add one other dimension, that the city did not have an overwhelming number of units built between, let's say, 1948 and 1952, 54, which would be characteristic of much of Richfield, East Bloomington. That our older units, the old Countryside, Country Club area, has very desirable housing in which people have invested small fortunes to upgrade. And the, the number of, of units that are, you know, 1,000, 1,200 square feet, which is, doesn't meet people's ideals and needs and standards today. We did not have a high proportion of those. And the units that are being expanded and even torn down are built in the late 50s and 60s. So you're getting expansion of, of units that had 1,600 square feet, something like that. If you look at housing in the United States, it's kind of interesting. In the 1950s, let's say 1950, the average house, how, single-family detached unit had 1,000 square feet. By 1960, it was about 1,600. We're, we hit a high of about 2,700. I think now we're about down to 2,300 on average, again, nationwide. So, people, people are, even in apartment units, I, I don't know, on some of these new units, they're, they're running much more than 1,000. That's, you know, people have too much stuff for 1,000 square feet.
And at the same time, smaller households.
Yes. Oh, yes. We, we need more space for our stuff.
So one of the theories I've always had, and I, and I don't know if there's any way to prove this with data, but, and you, you talk about it in terms of the era that the housing was built. When I go to surrounding suburbs and look at the quality of the housing that was built, even in the same era, I feel like we won the lottery on the builders at the time they built here. Because the, the quality of the construction was so good that you, you know, if you've got a quality house, and even now that they're being torn down, those are still really quality houses being torn down. Whereas you go and look at some of the other suburbs that weren't built at that quality, the value just wasn't there, it isn't there. And it affects, you know, it's just that cycle.
Well, I had my house appraised. It was built in 1957, and what they said, it was very, very good quality construction. So, but no, it's, so my point is that the relationship between school enrollment and housing is a very complex one. And we'd often try to make it very simplistic, but it's very complex. It has to do with the age, the amenities, the value, all of these things rolled into one. And we know today, and I can say tongue in cheek, you know, that people want master suites and, and some bathrooms in the master suite are, you know, large enough to hold a dining room table. But we don't want dining rooms anymore because we don't need dining rooms. We want open floor plans, you know, all of these things. And so that's, that's what people seek to have.
You talked about housing and what people are looking for in housing. But as we think about the future, whether it's the city or the school district, and we continue, continue to see revitalization, hope that continues, how do we maximize our chances that we continue to be a community that is delivering the kinds of amenities in life, those quality-of-life things that people, that people want to see and enjoy and would be attracted to in our particular town?
Well, I think one of the things is keeping one's finger on the pulse of, of the mood of what people want. The fear that, that one will somehow fall behind is always with us, I guess.
I've got another one for you. I don't know if this is, if this is something that a demographer would work on, but when you think about analyzing who is in an, who's living in these new apartments, can that be done? I suppose it can be fairly easily. But the, sort of the retention rate in those apartments, when you, when you think about a traditional sort of model, at least I think that, well, people might come into your apartment, your new apartments as young folks, they meet other, they meet somebody, they fall in love, they get married, and now they either stay in the apartment for a while or they want to look for a house or some other kind of situation where they can raise a family. You know, how do you go about having some kind of retention strategy so that you're maximizing your chances of hanging on to the young millennials, for example, that are, that are moving into your community?
Well, first of all, we have to recognize that people may be falling in love, but they're not getting married. And in all seriousness, marriage has now become a middle-class and upper-middle-class And it's occurring later in life. So I think people decide whether they stay in a community, whether they can find something they can afford, whether they really like the area they're living in. And I don't know, I suppose we could overlay voter data on some of those units, right? And get some sense of age, Dick? That would be, without surveying, that, that would be, I think, our option, is to look at the, overlay voter data and get some sense of whether we're, we're getting people under 40 or whether they're over 65 or somewhere in between. I would, I would assume that, you know, people will, if you become accustomed to living in a certain place, you tend to prefer to stay there. You know, you know where to shop, you know where to do things.
One of the things people, some folks in our town are worried about is that with the growth of some of these apartments that are more market rate, because that's what we've been doing mostly, is market rate, that that's going to create undue pressure on the school district with the number of kids coming in. But what I see from your data is that's, that's a myth.
That's a myth, yeah. And it's, it's a myth everywhere.
That's an ill-founded fear.
Yeah, it's a myth everywhere.
And apparently not an uncommon myth.
Yes. Well, the, some myths are very common.
I wanted to follow up to that myth, though, too, that you said earlier, Hazel, that the, the relationship between school enrollment and housing is, is complex. But it, there is, it does appear to be a relationship.
Yes.
And there are things that we could do as a city government to, to make it easier to do residential redevelopment or to make it more difficult to do residential redevelopment. And that would clearly have an impact on school enrollment. And I think it would be good for, for the city to know if the district does have a feeling, I mean, would I have a preference or a, or a policy you think we ought to consider? I mean, when I see the projections here, they look like a, a nice, easy projection, slow growth into the future that we could probably manage. And we could be helpful in terms of, of how we shape a, a housing policy around that if we knew that was something that the, the district wanted to see. But what happens sometimes is what the mayor was referencing is, is when we get involved in some kind of, of community controversy over a density or height or some apartment building, we tend to get whipsawed about, you know, is the city really going to do something to hurt the school district, which of course, we don't want to do. But, but that's a question that, that we need to, I think we need to get some feedback on from the district on.
I think looking at these numbers, based on the last time that I saw them as a board member, I would say we're still looking at slow and steady, which is what Hazel shared with us about four or five years ago. And to see the slow and steady, I think generally is, is a, is a good thing in terms of the fear factor of we're suddenly going to get this influx of kids that we weren't prepared for. And since we, in your numbers, you did show the, the drop, that slow and steady is going to help us come back from the drop. So I don't, I, at, at this point, I don't see it as something that I'm personally afraid of. I think it's a, it's, I like slow and steady, but at the same time, we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing all that we can to attract those students who do choose to move to Edina. As you were saying, it's one of the core reasons people move here. And so we want to always be, if we can, the best and first choice for those kids. But I think the numbers look like they're, they're going in the right direction. I don't, you know, we're not a, a growing suburb that's suddenly going to have 500 more kids next year because of building.
I think one of the more important points for me here is we, if we think about the data that, that's been provided, is the, was the data surrounding the per-student yield, per-single-family household. And what struck me as a little bit counterintuitive was the idea that the newer the unit, the higher the yield, the higher the price of the unit, the higher the yield. That's something I need to think about a little bit, because I assume that somebody coming into Edina buying a six-figure or a seven-figure house is, you know, maybe not going to have the, as large a family as somebody that lives there.
Well, the reality is with, with people marrying later, and you have two professionals, you actually have pretty significant buying power. And with, you know, total fertility being at 1.8, the number of, of families with even three children is pretty small, pretty small percentage. So people don't have a lot of kids, they're older parents these days. And, you know, it's a, the perceptions we hold tend to have been formed out of our own coming of age. And we all came of age in a, in a very differed era than, than the one we're living in now. And I know that's why I say it's counterintuitive, but we see it just everywhere, just everywhere, everywhere, that, that, that the newer unit has more, has more kids and, and the more expensive the unit.
But you also said at the beginning of your presentation that, that the size of households is smaller.
Oh, yes.
All across the board. And I suspect if you went back another 10 or another 20 years beyond, back into the past, we would find that even more market. You know, that typically in the 60s and 70s, it wasn't unusual to see five, six, seven kids as opposed to two or three.
Five, six, seven, it was still a pretty high number, a pretty large number. At the height of the baby boom, it, the, the completed fertility was, was under four.
And now under two.
Yeah, and now we're under two. The other thing that is changing, of course, is that a higher percentage of families will not have, have children, or school-aged children. So something else to remember, at least currently, the people most interested in, in public schools and funding public schools are the parents of children attending the public So as we have, we move into a society in which, you know, fewer people have children in school, more households don't have school-aged children. I think that presents a, a different kind of challenge.
Well, except in Edina, it's been true that historically, we've had broad support from families, whether they have kids in school or not, because people that had their kids grow up here and no longer have kids around realize that their real estate values are tied to the quality of the school district.
Yes.
So...
But, but I can name districts where...
Sure.
That doesn't, doesn't correlate.
It's quite rare, you know?
I have a quick question. So, and maybe you went through this, but you had said that one of the elementary schools you were projecting to have a larger growth.
Yes.
And what is driving the larger growth at that particular school?
It has a, it has a much higher survival rate, which may be resulting out of those teardowns. teardowns, I don't know. But that, when I say the survival rate, it's always significantly over 1.00.
The survival rate has nothing to do with whether or not they allow dodgeball in Lafayette.
No, no.
Hazel and Dick, we all want to thank you. There's so much food for thought here. And I'm sure we've got your report in electronic form. Because I think the school board and the council want to get back together again and talk through some of these things that are the product of your work and see how we can work even more effectively together. So, and then for our friends on the school board, everybody in the city council, be included, is looking for hockey tickets. It's the most important thing of the night. And I'll drive you over there if you, all right, we'll cheer for hockey tickets. All right. So thanks, everybody, for coming in. Thanks.
This was familiar.
Thank you.